The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'll call the council to order. Let the role reflect that all council members are in attendance with the exception of council member Lyfeld. A quorum has been established. We're going to begin this evening with recognizing the National Arts and Humanities Month and a mayoral proclamation. I see Bill's here, is Bill here? And whoever, and all the guests from HPAK, please join me at the roster here. We have a resolution, a proclamation tonight and to recognize Arttober, right?
Arttober.
Arttober, A-R-T, Arttober. So we're gonna have a proclamation read and I'll start with council member Vaughn to begin the proclamation.
Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as the White House and Congress for over thirty years and...
Whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of mankind and...
Whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American and resident of Hastings and...
Whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country.
Whereas the nonprofit arts industry strengthens our economy by generating one-hundred-and-thirty-five billion in total economic activity annually, two, twenty-two-point-three billion in government revenue, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of four-point-one million jobs and...
Now therefore be it resolved, uh, resolved that I, Paul Hicks, Mayor of Hastings, do proclaim October as National Arts and Humanities Month dubbed Arttober in Hastings, Minnesota, and call upon our citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our nation and to specifically encourage the greater participation by those said citizens in taking action for the arts and humanities in their towns and cities. Thank you very much and please talk about the Arttober and HPAK activities. Appreciate it, thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you Mayor Hicks, council members. We really appreciate this proclamation. My name is Bill Spinelli, I'm with HPAK, the Hastings Prescott Area Arts Council, and we're a volunteer organization whose mission is to foster the arts in the communities. And we believe in that because we believe that art makes communities better and more vital, independent of the economic development that Mayor Hicks has already identified through the proclamation. If you will, I want to tell you a story. About two weeks ago, several of us, including council member Lyfeld, were to retreat sponsored by Arts Midwest with about fifteen other communities around the state of Minnesota who are trying to develop their arts programs. And one of the communities came up to us and they said, "We are so glad you're here because you folks are so far ahead of everybody. We can't wait to learn from you what you're doing with arts in Hastings." We were kinda surprised.
Fair?
We didn't realize we were that far ahead, but it was nice to have that recognition. We see Arttober as an opportunity to celebrate the local artists in all their varied forms and some special artistry that's coming down from the Minnesota Museum of American Art that'll be hosted at the Hastings Art Center starting this Friday. And we think that this is the first step to continuing, moving forward so that we can stay in the lead of all these other communities who are real interested in learning from us about what arts is about. So again, thank you for this and we appreciate it and we look forward to seeing you and all the rest of the citizens wandering around and exploring the arts in our communities over the next month.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate this.
Okay, I had the distinct honor before this council meeting tonight to go out and see the new Veterans Home bus that's been sponsored by the American Legion, the VFW, and I'm leaving some important sponsors along, so I'm gonna hope that Sue Register is who's here and, well, that's, we're, we're, yeah, I know. We have Andrew Burnside who's here, who's the director of the Minnesota Veterans Home. And Andrew, we're very glad to have you here, can you come up and talk about your, your new bus? It looks absolutely beautiful out there.
Thank you Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Andrew Burnside and I, I do direct the Hastings Veterans Home and have for about the last five years. If you had the chance to, to see the new bus outside, it is quite the standard that we've set for ourselves. Most of our buses have been typically the white with a small Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs emblem and we decided to raise the bar a bit this time with Sue Register's help as our volunteer coordinator. I also want to acknowledge a number of contributors. One is Doug Erickson from Hastings Ford, he financed, I should say Hastings Ford financed the wrap on that vehicle and if you saw it, it's pretty extensive. Also, the artist that the image was used to wrap the vehicle with is David Youngren, who was here earlier and has left. The local VFW, a local Lions organization who chooses to remain anonymous. Abra Hovgard from Edwin Jones Company, Dean Marcusson from Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, the Hastings Eagle Club, Alivio Military Mason, I'm sorry, Military Museum in Red Wing, as well as the Veterans for Veterans Organization, the American Legion Foundation and Pheasant Fund, and our local AFSMI Union. You know, we do medical appointments for the vets, they occur every business day, typically multiple times each business day. Put a lot of miles on our vehicles, so they, they don't last too long. That eleven-passenger van that we received is, is really a blessing for the, the veterans and goes a lot to improve their quality of life. These organizations, as great as they are, they're made of people, most of those people are a local community, and I just want to acknowledge them and the, the city council for their contribution to the vets home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, thank you. Congratulations.
I'm sorry, sorry Mayor. One of our local artists that happens to be a resident took a picture of the building and through the wonders of Photoshop created what appears to be a pencil drawing of the, the building and we wanted to present that to the council.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. It'll hang probably. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, thank you. People who didn't get a chance to see it? Okay, council, we also have before us the minutes of the regular city council meeting on September eighteenth, twenty-seventeen. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand to prove. Council items to be considered, any council items to be considered? Councilmember Foltz? Sure?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to add to the agenda a brief conversation about the Breakaway Arts Center, the sidewalk.
Okay. We'll put that number three under administration.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Everyone have that? Okay, and are there any further items? Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda, council, what's your wish? Councilmember Foltz?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I would like to pull on number two, reject Solar Garden subscription proposal.
Okay, we'll put that as number, item four, under administration.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further comments under consent agenda items? Okay, motion to approve is in order. Councilmember Balsanick makes that motion, seconded by councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion prevails. Next, we'll go to awarding of contracts of public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight in relation to city code amendment rezone Hastings Industrial Park. John, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. On the map before you, I've got the amendment before us tonight, it's consists of two actions. One is a city code amendment rezoning to rezon property from public institution to industrial park, and the other is a comprehensive plan amendment as well, which would change the designation under the comprehensive plan from park to industrial park. What we're looking at right now is about a twenty-two acre parcel located here. This is Spiral Boulevard in the Hastings Industrial Park. You can see the water tower here and the, and the Hastings Veterans Sports Complex a little bit further to the west. The reason why we're bringing this before you tonight is we're seeking shovel-ready certification for our industrial park. What shovel-ready certification would do is provide us more tools and more access to better market these undeveloped areas of our industrial park. And having sites of fifty contiguous acres has been seen as something that would put us in a more advantageous position to lure larger facilities in the future. From talking to the people that are involved in the shovel-ready certification program, it appears those sites are in short supply and we would be best served in having that available here. They've been down to our park, they've looked at the facilities that we have and have been impressed that we would be able to be, compete very well with other industrial parks in the region. So that being said, we're, we're moving forward to create that piece. The twenty-two acres that we have right here would be combined with the property further to the south, which would combine to make a fifty-acre contiguous piece of proper future development. What this does is change the land use designation and changes the zoning of the property. What it doesn't do is to extend utilities into the property or subdivide the property at this time. What this is done, what this is going to do is to provide for marketing and provide for the designation necessary for the certification program. If a person was, or entity was to come along in the future, we would assess the extension of utilities and development of the property at that time. So the actions before you are the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning. We did have this reviewed by the Planning Commission on September eleventh, twenty-seventeen. They did vote five to one to recommend approval of that action with no one spoke, speaking for or against it during the meeting. We also had the Planning Committee of City Council look at this on August twenty-third and they were generally supportive of the change. So I can stand for any questions, again, this is a public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John, for your description of the process here and, and of this proposal. I will open this up to a public hearing. Does anyone here would like to speak to the rezone and the industrial park property? This is the, this is the public hearing for that discussion. Okay, anyone? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, we'll deal with this item, what's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve, is there a second by councilmember Foltz? That motion is now before the body. Is there a further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, next, we have the public hearing in relation to a city code amendment rezoning downtown parking for a conversion of existing buildings to restaurant, bars, and taverns. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council member. We have the public hearing tonight for a code amendment to our parking ordinance related to downtown. There's two actions primarily that are taking place here. One is through the issuance or the creation of a special use permit procedure. It would provide an exemption from additional parking requirements triggered by the conversion of existing buildings into bars, restaurants, and taverns. What that means is, under the current existing code, buildings are exempt from meeting parking requirements provided they've been in operation since about two thousand and three. However, if these situations, these businesses are changing into things that are more intensive, then they're required to provide the difference between what they're grandfathered in and the new requirements. Where this hits, hits most directly is with the conversions of bars and restaurants. If you have a retail office facility and it's now being converted into a bar or restaurant, parking is going to be required under the code as it sits right now. And the ability for properties to accommodate those additional parking is, is pretty much impossible. As you know, with the downtown area, most properties take up the entire lot itself, there's no room for parking. One of the things that we did prior to this is go through a downtown parking analysis of the spring. We wanted to make a determination as to what the existing situation was for parking in the downtown. Where might there be problems at? What is the overall parking and what is, what's been happening down there with its use? So we went through a study during the spring of this year, went down on multiple times and multiple different times of the day. We found out is that the, the, we have a good inventory of, of public and private parking. The parking usage during various times and periods of the day of the week varies, however, we did not see anything that was terribly critical from these areas. There are some areas of higher concentration of use, but it didn't quite reach the circumstance where the, there would be problems that we anticipated coming forward. So that being said, we're, we're moving forward with the creation of the special use permit requirement based upon the, the parking study and the availability of parking in the downtown area. One thing that's key about this is any time that a, a business would come forward, they would need to come forward directly to the Planning Commission and to the city council for a special use permit. Would give us the opportunity to take a look at the, the parking situation, revisit the parking study, provide any updates at that point to ensure that the parking would not have a, a negative impact on the downtown area. So that's the, the primary thing that's being changed with the code tonight. The other one is, we're clarifying the extent of the existing exemptions to downtown parking. Within the parking code right now, there's an exemption for areas downtown that are zoned downtown core. Just portions of the downtown are zoned that. The majority of the downtown zone C-three, this exemption is not technically available to them. However, we've been, we've been providing that exemption for people for a period of time, so we are providing language in there that would limit that C-three exemption for parking to the downtown area itself, so that's the other portion of this ordinance amendment. So we did review this at Planning Commission. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this on a five to zero vote with one abstention. We didn't have anyone speak for or against it during the public hearing at that time. We also prevented the, presented the parking study to the Downtown Business Association on September fifth of this year. The association was generally supportive of the finding and the proposed ordinance changing. However, they did note that further analysis should be completed upon building conversions to make sure that the data is still pertinent. And then we also, the Planning Committee looked at this on August twenty-third as well and with their direction crafted the ordinance language that you see before you today. So I can stand for any questions that you have on the ordinance amendment. Again, this is a public hearing and you may open that at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. And this is in regards to the amendment rezoning, department, downtown parking, conversion of existing buildings to restaurant, bars, and taverns. Does anyone here is wishing to speak on that particular issue? Anyone like to speak to that issue? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, that issue is before us, what's your wish? Councilmember Balsanick?
I would like to... Change to the...
Okay, councilmember Balsanick makes a motion to approve, is there a second to that motion? Seconded by councilmember Brox. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Okay, I, I really appreciate the fact that we're bringing this forward, you know, this gives us a lot more flexibility in our downtown and also some of the businesses that are down there, particularly if they're involved in eatery or, you know, fine food and drink type of establishments in our downtown area. And looking forward to the analysis later when the Hudson Building moves along and we have the additional ninety-nine public spaces of parking that's gonna occur there. So I think that's going to be a, a real add-on to parking and, and serve us well in the future in the downtown. So glad to see this come forward. Thank you. If there's no further discussion on the motion before us, motion, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, next, we have a resolution on the site plan at Cotterius Smith Funeral Home and Cream, and Creamery? Crematory, I should say. Let me take a correction, that's enough to confuse things. John, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. This item may look familiar to you. We had a similar request for the rezoning of this property back about a month or so ago. At that time, we were looking at the rezoning of this property here located, located at thirty-seventy-five Vermillion Street from C-two to C-four, which was ultimately approved by the city council. Tonight, we're looking at the site plan approval. The site plan approval consists of the construction of an eleven-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot funeral home in crematorium at the location. The site is presently home to the Knights of Columbus Hall. This property here would be, would be raised and a new property constructed on top of it. The building itself would be about eleven-thousand-five-hundred square feet, have parking area laid out as so. The single axis coming off of Highway sixty-one Vermillion Street would be the same. The building would be located about here on the lot with meeting areas, office spaces, garage spaces, and then the crematory aspect of it as well, and then landscaping throughout the site. As you take a look at the property itself, everything around it is zoned commercial. Going back to the site here, we've got areas such as Mian Julio's to the south here, cemetery to the north, Highway sixty-one to the west, and then various businesses here down to the southwest of the property. The building itself would meet our landscaping, our parking requirements, and would be a nice addition to the area itself. This is a rendering of what the property would look like here, meeting our architectural standards for the property. So Planning Commission did review this on September twenty-fifth. They did recommend approval of the action on a five to zero vote with limited discussions. Only the applicant spoke at the meeting at that time. So we are recommending approval of this action, will, subject to the conditions on the resolution itself. We do have representatives from Cotterius Smith present tonight if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John, for that description, council, of this issue is now before this body. And what's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have, after reviewing this and looking at the current places that we have funeral homes, there's a lot of parking, but my concern still is there for a large event, what's the overflow? What is, can, they can't, I was at the Buoy, I mean, they were parking on Highway sixty-one, what we probably can't do, but has the applicant talked about a, a solution for that if the parking's not enough to hold it?
Sure, council member, there's about one hundred spaces on the property right now, so you, under our parking code, it would meet it, but to address your point on an overflow situation itself, I don't know if, if the applicants have had any discussions with neighboring properties on how that might be able to be handled in an overflow situation
Welcome to the meeting, we're very glad to have you here. Appreciate your name and address for the record.
I'm Russ Karsh with Keystone Funeral Home Design. Address is two thirty-three Thirty-Fourth Avenue, Southway Park, Minnesota. Our little niche is that we build and remodel funeral homes. We do try to incorporate pretty much all local labor and materials, so we do the design of it and then construction management of it, so we do try to employ all the local people. As for the parking, I think at their current location right now, they have zero or, or four. And typically, they actually do have more than what's required. I would have, you know, suggested anywhere from sixty-five to eighty-five or so. With the overflow parking, there is access if, we haven't actually talked to the other resident, or commercial residents in the area, buildings, but there would be some overflow, I'm sure, either at the hotel if need be, or the, the restaurant there, which I think that, actually, the funeral home to the restaurant is actually an ass, asset to the restaurant too. The people come to a visitation, they may stop before or after for dinner, or a drink, or that type of thing. So I don't think parking, I would say, yeah, once, you know, once every ten years, are they gonna have enough parking stalls? No, but they have zero right now, so I would say ninety-nine out of a hundred times, they have more than enough parking right now.
Thank you, appreciate your testimony. Council, councilmember Vaughn?
With that, I make a motion to approve the site plan for Cotterius Smith Funeral Home.
Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve the site plan at thirty-seventy-five Vermillion Street, is there a second to that motion? Seconded by councilmember Balsanick. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion on the site plan? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just had a quick question about landscaping on the side of the funeral home which will be facing Julio and I, or Julio and me? Me and Julio?
Sure.
(laughing) There was some concern expressed by the owners in regards to the crematorium being close to their property, and I was wondering, what is the screening that's going to be between the two establishments, if any?
Sure. Councilmember, towards the southeast corner of the site here, this would be the boundary line with Mian Julio's Restaurant, and there are some coniferous trees that you can see staggered planted down in this location here. I would suggest these are probably about twenty, twenty to twenty-five feet on center, so upon the maturity of these plantings, they should provide a pretty good screen.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, okay. Is there any further discussion? Let's take a motion, do we have a motion? We have a motion, we have a motion, okay, a motion before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, next, we'll go to, under administration, approved issuance of sale of one million seventy-five thousand general obligation improvement bonds. And we have Paul here, Mr. Steinman. Welcome to the meeting, we're very glad to have you here, sir. I hope I didn't break protocol, 'cause I know Melanie's here and...
I'm good.
Oh, you're good, okay, welcome, Paul, we're very glad to have you here at the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We'll go through our natural choreography here with our yellow sheets, commonly referred to as the bid tabulation. While that's being distributed, all of you probably have seen this a number of times. So we actively took bids this morning at eleven o'clock in our office on your million seventy-five thousand dollars of general obligation improvement bonds. As you can see represented on this form, there's thirty-four underwriters who had an interest in buying your bonds today, rolled up into five total bids. Your best bid from UMB Bank at a true interest rate of one-point-eight-four percent. And, and the next bid was eighteen basis points higher, so a very, a very good bid. And all your bids were separated by about twenty-seven basis points, or a little over a quarter of one percent. The bonds were downsized because you received a premium, which has been commonplace too about the last ten years. So you, in the end, rather than borrowing a million seventy-five, you actually borrowed a million fifteen thousand dollars at a true interest rate of one-point-eight-four percent. And lastly, for the council, your, your credit rating was reaffirmed at double-A stable through a process that involved Melanie and through a credit, a credit rating presentation to S and P. Again, they reaffirmed your double-A rating with a stable outlook, meaning they don't intend to change that, that rating over the course of the next two years in something, unless something very significant were to happen. And they have a number of summarized bullet points under rationale in that report, which are excellent reading material for all of you folks. So with that, my recommendation is to approve your sale to UMB Bank at a true interest rate of one-point-eight-four percent.
Thank you, Mr. Steinman. Any questions or discussion, council, on the general obligation bonds? Straightforward, one-point-eight percent, that's, that's doing pretty well. Yep. Is there a motion to approve? Councilmember Foltz makes a motion to approve, seconded by councilmember Lund. That motion is before the body. Councilmember Vaughn?
I think we should just give recognition to staff on that to keep that double-A stable bond. Thanks for keeping our numbers in line to help us keep that going forward, so we're working our way towards our goal here.
Well said. Thank you, staff. Okay? All right? We have a motion before the body, is there any additional comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion prevails.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, appreciate it. Thank you, Melanie, appreciate your help. Next, under administration, we have a presenting, presentation of the twenty-eighteen Tourism Bureau budget and the tourism assessment report. And we have our...
Your AV guy up here first. There we go.
Fix the technical. Fix the technical issues there.
All right.
Thank you, Madam President of the Chamber of Commerce here in Hastings, Kristi Bars. Thank you, Kristi, for being here and providing us the, this important information.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight. Um, I do have a couple, uh, pieces of brochures that we did this last year that, if you don't mind, I'll approach the bench and hand out. And I also want to give recognition to Dave Youngren, a local photographer, for this beautiful photograph that is the beginning of our presentation here. Okay, so we had a very exciting year for the Hastings Tourism Bureau, and before we jump into the marketing plan and the, an overview of the tourism assessment report, I'm just gonna give a, a brief review of our past year. Oops. Suggestions on... Okay, so last year, um, if you remember, prior to me introducing the two thousand sixteen-seventeen budget, um, our tourism assessment board of advisors had met to come up with three strategic objectives for us. And the first one was to create a shared vision and defined brand around tourism. And the strategy that we were going to engage in was, um, to be a part of the Hastings Tourism Assessment Program through the University of Minnesota Extension Tourism Department. And the second goal was to provide fast and easily accessible visitor information. Um, so we were going to create a tourism website that's focused solely on, um, tourism information. If you can remember, a few years ago, the, the chamber and the tourism were combined as one website, so this past year, we did separate that into two markets. We have the VisitHastingsMN and then the HastingsMN.org. Um, and then the second is to engage in social media, so we have our own Visit Hastings Facebook page that has been active for the past year. Um, and then the third strategic objective was to increase our tourism tra, traffic through partnerships and targeted marketing campaigns. So I am gonna work backwards on this, um, increasing tourism traffic. So one of our strong partnerships that we had was through Explore Minnesota and also the, um, Inns of the Valley, which is a group of bed and breakfasts throughout the St. Croix Valley. And through that partnership, we created a, or we participated in what's called Toast to the Valley, and that's that first publication I handed out. Um, and what it is, is it is a, um, map of all of the wineries and breweries and bed and breakfast along the St. Croix Valley. So you can see in that lower left-hand corner that Hastings is called out as part of that map. Um, we were a partner in writing the grant and then also facilitating the publication, which has been extremely well received. Um, and a second part to that is our, our marketing. So we, uh, with our slightly limited budget, try and focus on our niche marketing, and biking was a, a number-one focus for us this past year. So we did, um, ads in the Have Fun Biking Guide, Minnesota Trails, Explore Minnesota, and AAA. And then we also focused on publications and online ads that, um, were geared towards, uh, river towns and then multi-generation markets. So we partnered with, um, or we had ads in Big River, the St. Croix Valley, and Minnesota Valley Partners. Okay. Um, as I mentioned, we, the second strategic goal was to provide fast and easily accessible visitor information. And we created in March the Visit Hastings website, which has been live for almost a year. Um, and then on top of that, we had the Visit Hastings Facebook page, which in the past year is close to two thousand likes. And for our third strategic objective, creating a shared vision and defined brand, we engaged in the Hayes, Hastings Tourism Assessment Program through the University of Minnesota Extension, which many of you were involved in that process this past year. So what that was, was a three-sixty look at tourism in Hastings. And the first piece was to engage our community members, to get feedback from them on what they feel our Hastings tourism assets are. And to get that feedback, we had two community meetings, one to simply take an inventory from our community members, and the second's to do a SWOT analysis on what they feel our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats are for Hastings tourism. Um, the second piece to that project was to get feedback from an expert team. So we had a team of TEM experts, and these were econo, economist, um, analysts, there were members of Explore Minnesota, members of the tourism, University of Tourism Department through the University of Minnesota Extension, and they came and visited, um, the Hastings communities for two days. They stayed in our hotels, uh, they shopped in our shops, they ate at our restaurants, they rode in our bike trails, and then they gave us feedback on what they think the Hastings tourism potential is. Um, and then the third piece to that was, um, to get feedback from visitors. So we don't know when these visitors came. I'm assuming that's one of them. He drove his motorcycle upright up to the door, so I'll put that picture in there, but we had no idea when these visitors were coming. So, um, the expert team put together small targeted markets, and they came to visit Hastings to do the same thing that the, um, expert team did, which is stay in our hotels, shop in our shops, and, and ride in our bike trails, and, and provide their feedback. So when all of that was compiled, they gave us the number-one pressing need, which is to create a compelling shared vision for tourism that's fully supported by the community's organizations, local government leaders, and residents, which is great, because that's why we engaged in the program to begin with. So, um, the best thing about that is they provided a very comprehensive report with short and long-term goals. We received that tourism assessment report, I believe it's in your packets that you have today, too. We've had it for just under a month. Um, so what I was most excited about is that it was on the same path that we were already going towards. So they broke it out into ways that we can maintain and enhance our, um, attractions and services, and then how we can, um, create our marketing. So part of that was, they said, yes, you have a website, that's fantastic, we know it's only been up for a year, but it could use some reorganizing. So this year, our, um, our tourism board of advisors and the chamber staff will really focus on, okay, what is it like to experience tourism in Hastings and create packages and actual, um, short itineraries that we can put together in the website? Um, the second was that we need to, um, educate our residents and the employers in Hastings on all Hastings has to offer. Um, I don't know about you guys, but my husband and I were just up in, in Cook County, and I, that's, their major industry is tourism, and they, um, have a very, very robust and expensive website. Um, however, when I'm at the hotel and I want to know where the closest waterfall is, it's not as easy to navigate through the website, so I asked my server. Um, and if the server told me, I'm not really sure, I don't really hang out in town, I'm not from here, that's prob, that's gonna impact my, um, my experience. So, um, luckily, she had excellent suggestions, and it was a fantastic trip. Um, but I think that we could do a little bit of that educating here in town. So we talked about creating the, um, one, two, and half-day itineraries around themes. Uh, let's see, uh, place, they recommended placing bike maps around town. We have already partnered with the, um, Rivertown Publications to update the street map, which now includes, uh, the trail map. I only have one, but I will pass this around. And we are gonna make sure that this is in our, our, uh, local gas stations and shops around town as well. Okay. Let's see. Oh, and then develop seasonal packages, which is what, something we've been working on. So packages that would, um, coincide with discounts for our, um, ski resorts, that, um, coincide with discounts for our lodging and, um, activities that people can take advantage of in fall, summer, and winter. And this falls under the, if, on your marketing plan, this falls under the management and partnership section. Okay, in regards to marketing, um, they, the recommendation was to do an audit of the current tourism materials. So they called out, uh, several organizations who are passionate about tourism or advertising Hastings as a tourist destination in town. Um, so they recommended doing a audit of everything out there and seeing if we can come, come up with a shared vision where the Hastings Tourism Bureau would take a lead on. And the second would be to track our ROI on the niche markets that we're already focusing on, which is biking. Um, they recommended investing in SEO for the Visit Hastings website. They recommended, uh, recreating the Visit Hastings guide, so that second piece that I handed out was our current Visit Hastings, um, publication. So they recommended, um, looking at that with new packages and printing additional, um, printing additional brochures, making sure that that's prominent in our, um, local shops, and then also in our regional, with our regional tourism partners. Um, and then the last would be to use social media campaigns to promote these packages in target markets. So, um, a key takeaway, again, we've only had this for about a month, um, but one of my key takeaways is that we are already on the right path. And when I say we, I mean that the, the city, the, the chamber, the Tourism Bureau, we're all on the right path. Um, we worked hard to preserve our historic buildings, um, and that's, that's paying off. Um, the Rivertown Renaissance is an incredible asset, and, and that's paying off. Um, the investment in our bike paths are gonna continue to be, uh, an asset, so, so we're on the right path. Um, and we, as a Tourism Bureau, have an exciting and challenge ahead of us to kind of take everything that Hastings has to offer and come up with a, a shared and compelling vision that can be supported by all of those parties. This is also a Dave Youngren image, too. Okay, so finally, I'll just, I'll thank our leadership team. Um, this was, this was a long year. It was a, it was a fun year, but it was a lot, a lot of work. Um, and so we, we have ten members of our tourism team, I'll just throw them up there. Uh, they were heavily involved in this report, um, and the community meetings and providing feedback and gathering data, past studies, so I just want to make sure that they are So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you for that fine presentation, Kristi. Appreciate that very much. Counsel, let's open it to the floor. Is there any questions or comments? Questions or comments? Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you.
Uh, uh, well, let's go to the council first, and then I'll recognize you, George. Okay? Just a few seconds. Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kristi, I think we talked about this before, and did the, did the leadership team, and did the study bring anything back about working with the athletic groups in town? Or is that, is that part of the shared vision that we had?
You know, it wasn't called out specifically, and again, um, we have Cynthia, the author of the report, coming to our Tourism Board meeting tomorrow so that we can take a deeper dive into this. Um, but I think it's, it's coupled in the, um, opportunity to, um, partner with our local groups, and, and that's where that marketing piece will come in. Yep, and we've, we've applied for, uh, Explore Minnesota Marketing Grant so that we can double our distribution on that this year, so we can make sure that we have a robust amount to be able to provide to our, our sporting groups, um, to provide to all of our tourism attractions, and then to make sure that we're marketing fifty miles outside the area as well.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think what I really liked about this, uh, is the renewed vigor that we've seen with your, you know, I went to the meeting in February, there's a lot of enthusiasm, and I'm glad we're capturing that enthusiasm in this report. And the, uh, you know, the future of the city Hastings and the Tourism Bureau of working together, uh, with this renewed enthusiasm, plan of action, quite frankly, we were kind of wading the waters and seeing, everybody had a million different ideas on how we can do this, and, uh, now that we have this plan and this process, we've kind of been able to whittle that down and be able to zero in on things, and some things are getting done. So, uh, appreciate the effort that's being made in that regard.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to just say that I think, uh, this is a great step in the right direction. Um, and it was a, it was great to be part of the process and just to see some of the, as you said, the excitement and engagement. It did, it did involve, um, open opportunities for the community to get, community to get involved, and, um, I want to thank you for the effort of trying something different and, and also the creativity that you have to have with what is a limited budget to get things done. So hopefully, this is pushing us in the right direction, and we'll, we'll look for more good things to come.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you so much for your involvement as well.
Is there any further comment from up here? George, you said you had a question? But you have to come, so people, people want to be able to hear it at home, so you're gonna have to go over there, I'm sorry. Do you have a quick question?
Quick question. Go back to the picture of the waterfall.
Oh, it does, did you notice that it's backwards?
Ah, George noticed that the waterfall picture was backwards.
Way we have to get to it now. There we go. Yes. Good note. Thank you.
By the way, George, yeah, it actually, it's on the other side.
Yes. I will say that, um, and I'll iterate, reiterate it again, we've, we've had this report for such a short time, but we will plan a, a community meeting where we can really dive into it, because there were so many members that, that provided fantastic input. And so I wanted to, uh, honor our timeline that we have with the, the city as, as far as agreement, and get this presentation to councilmembers, uh, but we, as a Tourism Board of Advisors, will make sure that we plan a community meeting to go over it as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All the efforts of the team. Uh, next we have on the agenda the Breakaway Arts, uh, that Councilmember Foltz had brought forward. Councilmember Foltz, I'll turn the floor to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to raise this issue. Uh, what's been occurring for the last, at least year and a half, uh, the Breakaway Arts Center, um, has requested that they be able to have a sidewalk cafe. Unfortunately, one of the down, the, one of the very few downsides to the, uh, the new bridge is that MinDOT had, uh, taken back the sidewalk area in front of, uh, Breakaway Arts, and so it's no longer their property. Mecca Page, the owner, has been, um, requesting from the city to help make some accommodations for her to be able to utilize the sidewalk. And, uh, we had just a wonderful, uh, meeting two weeks ago now with, uh, commissioners from the Minnesota depart, from the state of Minnesota, I should say. And, uh, Mecca raised her frustrations about not being able to get permission. Um, it's complicated, uh, where MinDOT owns the property and trying to figure out, how can we take back the area in front of, uh, the Breakaway Arts Center, or can other arrangements be made, uh, so that she can acquire that property? And so, um, and I know that, uh, staff are concerned about it, and I just wanted to, uh, raise the issue. I had asked Nick Egger, our Public Works Director, at, right after the meeting, if he could, uh, please provide a, an update in two weeks about where that was, and I know the mayor personally was going to also, um, keep on the matter himself, which I, I greatly appreciate. What I was hoping for is if, um, at one of the next, uh, council meetings, if we could have, uh, a full update as to what's occurring, um, I would like the city council perhaps to take, to be fully aware of, um, what's occurring and what the options are, and how we can best serve, um, the Breakaway Arts Center. There is, uh, one of the conversation pieces is, uh, that MinDOT is willing to give back to the city, uh, the, I think they're referred to as the east and west ramps that lead, they wrap around the bridge there, and so, um, so I'd like for us to consider that, and then also, there's an alternative where perhaps she could just acquire, um, the area in front of her sidewalk, um, all by itself, um, but we're not sure if that's feasible or not. So I would just like to have full disclosure and make sure that the full council is having the ability to chime in on the matter.
Okay. I, I know that, as a result of the meeting with the MinDOT Commissioner, that he was gonna have his staff look at the possibility of just having that parcel put. And, uh, no, we'll follow up on what the Commissioner did with it.
Yep.
That's what we're waiting to hear from.
Yep.
So, very good.
Thank you.
Uh, next is, uh, the Solar Garden, that was number two on the consent agenda. You pulled that on, as number two, and that's the next issue before us, Councilmember?
John, what do you have?
Let me grab this here. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I would like to ask the council not to reject this proposal from Renee Sola for the city. I, I'd like to, uh, for us to take into consideration, how many opportunities does the council have come before it, where we can save between four to five million dollars of savings over twenty-five years on our electrical bills? The council, um, hasn't had the opportunity to hear from an independent nonprofit expert in this field, which could provide, or who could provide, uh, sound background information on this very complex issue. I've spent, uh, quite a bit of time trying to understand the issues around electricity. Try reading your electrical bill sometime, it's a lot trickier than you would ever expect. And so I just wanted to take a moment to provide just a little background information, um, on why this is a good deal. Uh, what we have here is a slide that was actually, um, it comes from Excel Energy, and what it, what it shows here is that, over the last fifteen years, on average, uh, for electricity, we see a three-point-three average increase every year over the past fifteen years. And so, um, this is the, the data. So you can see we've only had, uh, two dips, uh, down in two thousand and two, I'm not sure what happened there, while we saw such a large negative. And then two thousand and nine, after the recession again, um, when everything kind of tanked out. And, uh, we're currently, then in, uh, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, uh, the nation as a whole saw pretty much a zero percent inflation rate, and so that's why there's a dip there as well. So, um, what happens with, uh, solar subscription, just to keep it super simple, is that, um, you lock in at a rate for twenty-five years, and it's a, a rate that would be provided right now. Uh, the proposal provided a very conservative estimate of, uh... The proposal provided a very conservative estimate of, assuming that there was a 2% inflation each year with electricity. And so even with that 2% conservative estimate, we would see, well, the proposals that were received were between four to five million dollars. The 25-year subscription is an industry standard because that's how long the equipment basically is viable for, where it has its highest potential for creating energy. And also, these, these fields are very large. For a five-megawatt garden, you know, just visualize five football fields laid together. And that's about how big these complexes are. And so to finance these initiatives, the vendors require 25-year subscriptions so that they can get their finances in order. One of, some of the concerns also were in regards to, you know, that this is risky or this is an initiative that's, you know, so new that others don't know. You know, for the, for the average person, the common folk, this issue is very complex. And most people aren't aware of the benefits of solar subscriptions. And so what I'm providing here is the Met Council last summer, they pulled to get together our initiative. It's the Solar Garden Collaborative, where they released a request for proposals and 31 cities got on board with this. And so this is the list of the 31 cities that are a part of the Met Council Solar Garden Collaborative. I had called and talked to both of the Solar Garden providers who had provided proposals to the city. The first was IPS Solar. They couldn't provide the entire request from the city. It was only a partial. And so that's why the staff decided that it was more viable to go with Renee Sola. But I, I did call and I asked if they still had availability. And what I was told was unfortunately, no. They no longer have the availability that they had offered to us. It was Mendota Heights, West St. Paul School District that has already signed on to the subscription proposal that they had provided to us. And the rest of it is being taken by the Lakeville School District. It's currently pending. So I asked, I'm gonna go back one there. And so I further asked, who do you have on board with your solar gardens? Because they do have quite a few of them that were available. And so this is their list of public governmental entities specifically that they have on board. Governmental entities are awesome for these solar, these solar subscriptions because they are 25 years in length. Because how many businesses can promise that they're gonna be around for 25 years? Probably only the big guys. And so that's why, you know, hopefully most governmental entities will still be here over that time. And so I just wanted to point out that IPS has onboard 16 school districts. School districts. Who more than anybody is watching their budgets than school districts. Also within their portfolio is the University of Minnesota, the Mount Council, Blue Earth County, City of Minnetaka, City of Red Wing, and the City of Maple Grove, which is a leader in our state for sustainability issues. Then I asked Renee Solar Energy, who, you know, can you give me an idea of who are some of the governmental entities that you have on board? And they're not, their portfolio isn't robust as much as IPS Solar. But they did say they have locked in the City of Rosemont, Mayo. Again, the Met Council, because the Met Council's demand was so ginormous. And then they have three smaller cities, Gibbons, Jordan, and New Auburn. So I just wanted to provide a little bit more background information about that so that the council was aware of the many other governmental entities that are taking, taking this, the solar subscriptions on. And, and I just have to ask, I believe that all of us have a responsibility to the taxpayers to be fully informed. And so I'm suggesting that we not reject this proposal, but instead conduct a workshop of the council. Most of the Dakota County solar subscriptions are full. And so we're running out of time. And, and so I asked that we conduct a workshop, have on board a nonprofit expert in this industry that services governmental entities. And, and so that the whole, the whole council has the opportunity to listen in and ask questions. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember? The, remember, the action before the council, it's from number two of the consent agenda, is to reject the Solar Gardens subscription proposal. So that's what's before council. I think you might want to take your seat at the Diaz. Okay? Counsel, this item is before us. Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I, I was on the committee that recommended that we reject this. I want to be clear that we didn't say no to solar energy as a solution for cost savings or for an environmental solution for the city. We said no to this particular situation because it was not beneficial for the, the city long term. It was a risky contract that did not have the city's best interest in mind. So the, the potential cancellation fees were astronomical, which could possibly have outweighed the benefit of cost savings. And we just did not feel comfortable committing the city to 25 years of something that could potentially cost us or something that we would be forced into staying into because we were afraid financially to leave. So I have absolutely no problem with exploring things further. In fact, that's exactly what I'd like to do, which I think rejecting this, fellow councilmembers, I think rejecting this then allows us to do that. By not rejecting this, then essentially we're, we're looking to move forward with something. And I, I don't think this is the partner that we move forward with. So there's, you know, there's a, there's a lot of good that can come out of it. I, I absolutely agree. You know, the numbers are there if, if everything works out. But, you know, we can't count on what's gonna happen in 10 years or 25 years. And it just was not, the, the exit fees and so forth were, were just not something that, that I personally was comfortable with. So we did direct or discuss about staff looking at other solutions. I believe that's, I know that's underway, conversations. And I, I would say that that's, that's the way to go. And I would encourage the vote to, to reject this. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Brox.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I was also on the committee that reviewed the proposal. And I'm in agreement with Councilmember Lund that the proposal is not a bad proposal, but the contract is a very one-sided contract that favors and benefits the solar provider and puts a lot of risk on the City of Hastings. And that was the fundamental reason why we rejected the, the proposal. The length of the contract was one thing, a 25-year subscription. But also, you know, as I've talked to other cities who have, have these subscriptions, basically a solar garden has to sign a lease for the land for 25 years. So we're essentially covering their risk of leasing that land for that amount of time. And I, that isn't a risk that I, as a city, am willing to take on. I think that's something that company should take on as a risk. Also, some of the factors that we mentioned, Councilmember Lund mentioned, one he didn't mention was that solar energy is not regulated by the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission. And so their recommendation is that if you are gonna engage a solar provider, that you're well informed of what the parameters are in the contract because they are not regulating these contracts or any of this, really this industry. I have concerns about future prices. Right now, solar energy is cheap to produce. There is a lot of subsidy involved in that. So if those subsidies were to go away or Excel Energy decides to manipulate the price, we don't know what the price is gonna be. There's a lot of factors. It's a really complicated issue. And although I am in favor of exploring more options, I feel that this contract, this one-sided contract is a bad contract for the City of Hastings to sign because I don't feel it's in the best interests of our citizens for the long term.
Okay. We're still, I'm in discussions. Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Your Honor. In regards to the cancellation fees, I did talk to the Solar Garden Provider. And just to be clear, this was a request for proposals. It wasn't a request for bid. So the entire thing is up for negotiation, the amount of the solar subscription, as well as the terms for exiting. And he said that there was a lot of room for negotiations for reducing that amount. And, and I'm not exactly sure what it is that you feel are the risks. Like I had said, I'd spent a lot of time on this. And I think through education, you begin to understand more clearly about the risks and how there is essentially very little. And I understand about, if you feel that the, the subscription perhaps was written in their favor because it came from them. Again, terms are always negotiable. When I had sat down and negotiated one previously, I spent 11 iterations going over a contract and negotiating points, point by point with the contract, with the, with the vendor. And so all of this is subject to negotiation. And so that's why I had made the request that you have the chance to talk to a non, a nonprofit group that has absolutely no skin in the game whatsoever. And then they can give you honest answers and help you with any questions that you have had. We have not had that information provided to us, the Great Plains Institute. And then through the University of Minnesota, the CERTS program provides those resources, as I had suggested to the group before. And they would be more than happy to come and provide background information and answer any concerns that any member of the council would have if they were given the opportunity.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Vaughn?
All good input, but I, I still get hung up on if it's such a good deal, let's sign a five-year deal or renew after five or renew after 10, and then it gets to prove it. There's gotta be more risk on the vendor, no matter who the vendor is. I just think, on behalf of the city, I can't sign something that's 25 years in length. I like the idea of sending it back because I think my ask to the council is gonna be, what is our sustainability goals? We've never really discussed that. This could be part of it, but I still think that's why it needs to go back in bigger picture. This one, I agree with the councilmembers over there. We're gonna get locked in and that's not part of our goal. Now, this is already stating one of our goals without a good discussion.
Councilmember Balsanik.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'm not an expert on a lot of things. And, and one of the things that I'm not an expert on is solar gardens and, and contracts. And I, I really appreciate what Councilmember Foltz has done to bring the whole discussion to our attention so that it's something that we can go ahead and take a look at. But I kind of go back to what the committee had recommended. If I can find it here. Where did it go? So much paperwork, so little time, as they say, that the committee was asking that our staff continue to research this particular philosophy and come back to us with some suggestions, recommendations, and so forth. Yeah, recommending that the staff continue researching renewable energy solutions that better suit the city and its ideals. Again, I am not opposed to this kind of a thing. But I'm not sure if I'll be on the city council in 25 years. And so if I'm not on the council and there is a brand-new council, they're gonna say, what the heck did Councilmember Balsanik and all of his colleagues get us into? 10 years down the line, 12 years down the line, with something that I don't feel we've really taken a close look at. And I put a lot of faith in, in our staff to, you know, to do the due diligence, do their homework and so forth, and then come back to us with something that will be, I, I think, a good proposal. It may be this company. It may be another company. I'm not sure. But I, I think we need to do a little more homework on this. And again, I really do thank Councilmember Foltz for bringing all of this to our attention. It's just that, as councilmembers, we're not experts at this. And I, I do put a lot of faith in what our staff can do to come back with suggestions and recommendations. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just say that, first of all, I, in the same words as you did, Councilmember Balsanik, I appreciate Councilmember Foltz getting information in regards to this. I think, though, we've heard enough concern tonight around the Diaz, why there's probably been put brakes on it. Now, I know, Councilmember Foltz, you might feel like, because there's not enough understanding in the present information. But I think, but I think that there's, you know, enough concern that, you know, it doesn't hurt to keep looking at this. Solar energy is not gonna go away tomorrow. And, you know, maybe we can work out some of the things that we saw in the City of Mankato when they had a lot more of a risk-free signage of their, of their solar garden agreement. And I think that we can take the opportunity to get in a better deal and, and answer more of our concerns here. And I don't think it's a question of if we're gonna be involved in this. I think it's just a question of when. So, Councilmember Foltz.
Your Honor, one last note. There is not, I mean, just to be clear, there is not, there is not, again, I'm gonna say it, just an unending supply of solar garden subscriptions. Excel Energy, who owns the electrical grid, they only have so much bandwidth, so much capacity to take on extra solar that's getting pumped into the electrical grid. And so the, the vendors, they have to go through a process, which has become much more restricted in the last, like, six months for putting in applications for these solar gardens. Excel Energy wants to see them distributed around the state so that it helps to, you know, even the energy that's coming into the grid. And so I just want to be clear that this is not an, an unending supply. I mean, there, if you look at the spreadsheet that Excel Energy produces in regards to the vendors who are in Dakota County, because there's a rule. The rule says you can only subscribe to a solar garden that's in your county or an adjacent county. So it can only be in Dakota County or it'd have to be like Goodhue, Rice County. I can't remember all the counties that are adjacent to us off the top of my head, but there's only a few. There's like, what, five? And so, and then, and once Excel Energy has enough solar gardens in those areas, they're not gonna allow anymore. And so if you look at the ones that are in Dakota County right now, almost all of them are completely full. And like I said, IPS just said that they just filled their portfolio. And so it's kind of like how, you know, how we all wish we would have bought Google stock or Apple stock when, you know, they first came out. I mean, it's like that. It really is. It's like that, where, you know, the opportunity comes and then it's gone. And so I do feel bad for the group that you didn't have the opportunity to have an expert provide you background information and field those questions that you have because it actually, there isn't that much risk to it. If, if the solar garden itself doesn't produce power, you don't have to pay for your subscription. And so if something, you know, it folds, you're not on the hook for it. The only risk would be that historical inflation rates don't continue into the future. That is our only risk, is that we don't see more than like a 1% increase over the next 25 years for electricity. And so I think that's kind of far-fetched. But so anyhow, I'll, I'll, I'm not gonna take this personally. And I just wanted to make sure that we were giving our taxpayers the ability to have some substantial savings where most of the infrastructure improvement projects that come before the council have hefty price tags and our bonding debt goes up annually. So, that's that.
Okay. Well, I just want to make clear that, you know, no matter what action we take, I hope all councilmembers don't take it personally. This is a policymaking body. We are free to have our discussions and they're not, ought to be taken personally. So I'm glad to hear that statement. Councilmember Lund.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna, I don't wanna drag it on too much further, I guess. But it's, I don't know if there's a person on this body that's against looking into it further and not dragging our feet. It's, this is not the right opportunity in our, in the committee's eyes. And I do know that there are opportunities that Councilmember Vaughn had, had alluded to, maybe a five-year and so forth. I've been in communication with a group that has some opportunities such as that. So... So, you know, that, that might be a good first step into what may be, might be Google stock, but it could also be dial-up internet stock, too. We just, we, we got to be careful. And so I think rushing into it is, you know, although the opportunities, the doors may be closing, we do need more information and we do need a, a better partner than what, what we had presented to us, plain and simple.
Is that a motion, councilmember? Okay. Councilmember Lund makes a motion to, for the, committee's recommendation to reject the bid, seconded by councilmember Brox. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The motion prevails. Okay. Next, we have comments from the audience. Is there any comments from the audience tonight? Please, sir, come on up. Welcome to the meeting. Very glad to have you here.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Darren Berg. I've been a resident of Hastings for the last 50 years, my entire life. Bear with me here, this will sting a little bit. I and the community have become more increasingly aware of the unprofessional behavior and systematic removal of good employees at the city of Hastings, possibly just because you don't like them. I've been the recipient, unfortunately, of numerous phone calls and emails in the last two weeks of people that have had dealings with our city administrator. The only way I can describe them is horror stories. Through bullying, defamation...
Mr. Berg?
Yes.
I know this is comments from the audience, and we're, we usually have a very open system. I'm just going to caution you and others that want to make charges where I think you're going, okay? Because it's very serious and I don't think very helpful for the community. Now, you may have your opinion, okay? But I think that this, I, I, I don't know where you're going with the final thing, but I don't like the tone.
Okay.
If you have a concern about a process, you can talk about the concern of the process, all right? I don't think we're going to be having a meeting tonight, conducting or entertaining statements that are going to deride anybody, whether that's the councilmembers or our city staff, no matter who they are. So I'm just going to ask you, you know, if you have a concern you want to discuss, please do, but I think it would be inappropriate if you make charges or, you know what I'm saying.
I'm getting the information from other people, and...
And that's, and that's just it.
Not making charges. I guess, I guess if, if you don't want to hear...
Well, rumor I hearsay, as I, it's not what I want to hear.
Okay. What I'll do is instead of make charges or discuss how I feel about this, is, what I'm going to say is, you as city councilmen, elected officials, representatives of the Hastings community, I would like you to look into this and get a handle on it and stop it from happening.
Okay.
That's all I'm going to say then.
Okay. Thank you, and I appreciate your, your words there. Okay. Is there any other comment? Any other comments from the audience? Okay. Okay, seeing none, council announcements? Announcements. Okay. Councilmember Balsanik.
Yes, I'll be attending the Dakota Community, the DCC 911 Board of Directors meeting on the 12th of October.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Vaughn?
We have Hedra meeting coming, by the way, I'm going to tell us, October 12th is our next one, at 6:30 at City Council.
Okay. October 12th?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none, we have a few more announcements. On Tuesday, tomorrow, October 3rd, the Conference of Plan Steering Committee will be meeting at City Hall to talk about the comprehensive plan. And then on Monday, October 9th, at 7:00 PM, the Planet Commission will be meeting here at City Hall in these council chambers. On Tuesday, October 10th, at 6:00 PM, the Park and Recreation Commission will be meeting here at City Hall. And on that same evening, on Tuesday, October 10th, the Fire Department will host its annual open house, which is held each year for the National Fire Prevention Week. So please stop by, our police staff will be there, Dakota County Sheriff, and talk about fire prevention and safety. On Thursday, October 12th, Hedra, as indicated, will be meeting at 6:30. On Monday, October 16th, at 7:00 PM, will be the next city council meeting. And that is, no other items are before this council, motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Lund makes that motion to adjourn, seconded by councilmember Vaughn. That is a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. We are adjourned.